As luck would have it, we're ready for our, I believe, our final public hearing for this evening. Okay. Margot Doherty, this is 75 Kelly Street, special use permit and site plan approval. This is a public hearing on an application for special use permit and site plan approval to authorize installation of a front yard picket fence. We are no longer going to be doing a clear story window and French doors at this time, so this is strictly the special use permit and site plan approval for the fence. If you'd just like to come up and say, "I'm putting, I want to put up a fence," and we'll go from there. And, yeah, we've all had this, seen this in the application she gave us. That's it. Eric and I did the site visit. Eric, if you'd like to...
Yeah, it's gonna be a fence.
Yeah. It's a fence behind a stone retaining wall. It meets every requirement in the zoning law, proper material, everything. So, does C A B, the D C, have a comment? Yes?
So, myself and Teresa Velardi did the site visit, and in view of the L W R P policies, we don't see anything wrong with it. Looks like a nice fence.
Any questions from planning board members? Any thing from the public? Okay. I believe this was an unlisted action under seeker, therefore...
No, it's a type-two action.
Type-two action, I'm sorry.
Type-two action under seeker.
Therefore, we're all done with seeker. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
移到
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I will read an approval resolution.
Striking from the approval resolution, the words clever story window and French door.
Exactly. The town of Bryan Beaker by access follows on the application by Margot Doherty for special use permit and site plan approval to authorize the installation of a front yard picket fence. One, reaffirms its prior classification of the proposed action as a type-two action under seeker for which further environmental quality review is concluded, is not necessary. Two, deems the submissions made by Ms. Doherty to adequately depict the work intended and in consideration of the limited extent of the work waives the submission of any additional site plan information set forth within the town code chapter 125, section 125 dash 75C1. Three, finds the proposed work conforms to the objectives of work within the Rhine Cliff overlay district as set forth within town code chapter 125, section 125 dash 69B. Four, further finds the proposed work conforms to pertinent coastal policies as set forth within the town's L W R P. Five, grants the requested special use permit and related site plan approval and authorizes the chair to sew note on copies of the submission made by Ms. Doherty. Six, further authorizes the building inspector to issue building permits. Yes?
To issue a building.
A building permit, yes. As may be required for the proposed work upon receipt of signed documents from the chair. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will poll the board. Eric?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You're all set. Thank you. Okay, moving right along.
And here you can move ahead of schedule, there's no reason not to.
Yeah.
These are not called the current.
No, no. So what we have now is, up on the board is, 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 is... Martin Saad, yes, thank you. Okay. Application for site plan approval. Initial presentation of application for, in a 45-acre parcel within the historic preservation and conservation stream corridor and zoning districts of Hudson Feld National Reserve, Landmark District, and the town W R P, the modification of the existing site plan involving elimination of proposed solar installation and substitution at its location of in-ground swimming pool and deck.
So, Andy Didio with the project engineering, here on behalf of Martin Saad. As we talked about on the sketch plan review and in the previous approved site plan, they had a solar, they received a variance and had a plan to install solar array, and they wanted to remove that option and include it in ground swimming pool. So, we located the pool and field and surveyed, and so we showed, showed we were sticked up field subsequent to sketch plan meeting, where we decided to build a new plan, and wanted to emphasize the pool and identify the fact that it's not really the barn project because it was, it's got confusion as to really what the review was, so we went back and revised the plan, renamed it to Saad's Now Pool, reiterated the existing condition and kind of got rid of some of the proposed to be renovated barn language, and that's the plan we submitted. We also updated the zoning table to show areas of cover. We added a row that said, had gross area coverage of the parcels of roof and roof structures, that's identified there. Doesn't mean any of the D C says that. I think that's it. Oh, I just received the photo of the type of fence that they were, that they would like to put around, and Melody had requested kind of a factor or something. Basically, it's a split rail fence with well with water mash factor, so we'll get the 42-inch, 48-inch requirement and the 4-inch. And then the other thing was the Phase 1A archaeology study, birch wood archaeology was brought in. They did their site visit and issued the report to our copies of floating around, and I believe Gretchen emailed the visual to everybody, but basically they found that it's a significant historic site, with some historic structures on it, basically that any ground disturbance around any of the structures in the future, they would recommend a Phase 1B, so that they would dig some holes and identify anything, and that the, the construction of the pool would not have any impact on the digital integrity of the property, the historical history.
Questions?
Is the water gonna be brought in for the pool for, just from the outside and filtered, or is it gonna be a well put in on place for it?
Well, they, they did drill in the well for the, for the barn renovation, so most likely would be sorts of pools that struck in a couple of low of the water first, just to get it topped off, but then it'll be certified well for makeup.
That's the pool, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a, well, where on that site plan is that pool relative to the Christmas tree?
To the Christmas tree?
Uh-oh.
That's the one that you can see from the river, right? As you come across the bridge, you can see, it's, it's nothing to do with planning boards. If you come over to the kitchen right of the bridge, look down into the left-hand side, and every Christmas is a huge tree that's illuminated.
Isn't that on the property that's in Red Hook? It's on the adjacent, it's on the, it's on the Mandera property, isn't it?
The bank, the wrong property?
They're adjacent, but I think the one you're talking about is in Red Hook.
Okay, I'm sorry.
To the, to the north of that.
Disregard.
No, we're concerned with our neighbors, this is all right. This is good.
The Phase 1 study, you just said that the recommendation would be if there's any excavation around the buildings in the future, they should do some test digging. Was there any excavation around the barn when the new foundation was put in place?
Yeah, the barn was raised, and they dug out all around the, the foundation during that site plan process, because the barn was actually a historic structure, we got permit through, you know, permit or review and a letter back from the local W R P stating that both the aesthetic of the revisions to the exterior, which were minor, but also of the replacement of the barn, their only requirement at that time was that the existing stone be used to face it off so that it looked original, but there was no requirement of an archaeologist's...
So, did you find anything when you were digging?
No.
That's not, they may not have known what they were looking for.
Darn.
They may not have known what they were looking for. Could have been historic rock. But it's interesting, your point is interesting in that they were, they're somewhat different opinions offered by SHPO originally and now by this additional archaeology.
I see.
But you also negotiated some window changes with SHPO, didn't you, on that first phase?
Yeah, ocular window.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a procedural resolution to address this. We will be accepting the application supporting documents, including a site plan drawing revised to January 24, 2018, as adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public. We will classify this as a proposed action as type-two under seeker for which further environmental quality review is precluded. We will schedule a public hearing on the application for Monday, March 5 at 6:45? Okay. And direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within town code chapter 125 zoning, section 125 77, including distribution of agricultural data statement, and as may be required, notice to the town clerk for the town of Red Hook. And we're gonna have two planning board members go out there. Who would like to go out there? Don't all speak at once.
I'll go.
Who's going?
I'll go.
Eric, Richard?
Yep.
Okay. And you guys will, will can, and set it up? Very good. Okay, we will do the site visit. In accordance with town code chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, we're referring to the town C A B for review and written comment, and in accordance with town code chapter 118, our water consistency review, we refer to the W A C also for review, so if you two gentlemen can coordinate, let the C A B, W A C know what you guys come up with as a time for the site visit. And we are going to authorize the town planning consultant without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of both the above cited field visit and referral to prepare working draft of an approval resolution for the planning board's consideration on March 5, 2018, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Coordinate with these two gentlemen on the site visit. We could, and we'll see you on March 5.
Thank you.
All righty. Next item of business, Paul Kornhauser, Janelle Curran, Crosby Lane, application for site plan approval. This is the initial application, presentation of an application for site plan review and approval to authorize the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling on an 89.985-acre parcel within the rural countryside R C 5 and land conservation stream corridor, L C S zoning districts, the parcel being, both being under conservation easement and located contiguous to the national historic district, to a national historic district property and Dutchess County Ag District 20. And who do we have here to discuss this? Ah! You know, I really ought to put these back on.
Andy Didio again here, on behalf of Paul Kornhauser and Janelle Curran, the same kind of residents as described. So, I'm just passing around as part of the research review, as we're including the proposed driveway and the residence and the wastewater treatment system, there would be approximately 1.6 acres of soil disturbance, with, with CDs, partial swift, that was developed, and we can see that should be done. And then also, as we discussed during sketch plan, Department Health, Department Health is reviewing the, had reviewed the onsite wastewater treatment system and has given us basically through an area approval, saying all the changes are good, send us our copies and we'll stand by and get them. So, it's all up approved.
I know there was a question about the existing driveway to the existing house that then goes into the new proposed, and I guess the idea was to leave the existing driveway?
Yeah.
Now, at some point, if they're going to sell the existing site, are they gonna put an easement on that to allow access to the other property? Or they, or they...
No, the, the primary residence has the driveway and then the, and this is the primary residence for the south parcels, the parcel of significance, this is the primary residence of that parcel. They own both parcels.
Right.
This drive will remain. We have, and the planning board has been in receipt of driveway permit that was issued off of Crosby's.
Yes.
So, that is the primary access for this parcel.
Okay.
Ultimately, they may not put it in right away, and speaking with, remind me of who that was.
Barry Schreiner.
He mentioned, if you put in the curb cut right away, which he recommends because it's a one-year window, so if they put the curb cut in, get it into that field, they can use it, you know, if they need equipment or to get it, you know, whatever.
Okay.
They may not put the whole driveway in, but ultimately, if they decide to or not, it's up in the air, but, yeah, the speed is permanent, will be open until they decide and either say they're gonna nix the driveway for now or...
Okay.
Couple, I think the only change since the last time is the architect met with the owners, and they may have had a few revisions as far as building footprint, so that was to kind of eliminate some jobs in the architecture as well, pretty oriented pool, from particular to parallel with the house, on the long axis.
Did that change your, well, I guess it would, change your site plan drawing, it has a revised drawing, but submitted?
Yeah.
What's the date of that revised drawing?
That is 1/2.
I'm sorry, Michael, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, here it, now the driveway that's actually gonna be utilized is the existing one that is coming in through the other side, correct? Is that heading straight, is the structure you see straight, is the first structure you see will be the drive, the garage?
Here?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, or it's not in the front yard, it's the front inch.
Are you reading my mind?
Other questions?
Yeah, the, the primary driveway is here, but it may or may not be built?
Yeah, ultimately, because in the instance, basically, Michael, pinned it, is that if they build a residence here, primary residence here, and they want to use this driveway, because it's own separate parcel and it doesn't have a, have a driveway egress, the planning board would likely say, well, we need an easement because this is a separate parcel, even if it's under the same ownership, we need an easement to get there if there's no possible way to get it.
At that time, the decision will be made to either grant an easement or put this in?
Yeah, most likely put that in because it devalued the property to have an easement process. So, that's why they're willing to go through the expense in the design of driveway, and actually, it's the driveway that pushes it into requiring speed.
So, I guess I didn't, I'm not completely up to speed, I apologize, but the house, the proposed house will not be going in right now?
The proposed house will be going in.
So, how do you sign off on a piece of property that doesn't have a driveway?
Well, it, it does have a primary entrance and a curb cut. It's a, it is a bit of a gray area, I grant you.
It's gonna have to be installed for a C O.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be installed for a C O, otherwise you've got a common, a common driveway.
Or an easement would have to be granted for the other...
Right.
It's more than an easement, it would have to be an ownership maintenance, et cetera, agreement.
As a, as a common driveway.
Approved by the planning board.
That's a good point.
Even if it's just a very rough driveway?
Right.
Comes in, but it still has to meet the basic requirements of the pull-off, it's a long driveway every 1,500 feet, emergency vehicle turnaround, all that stuff. Right?
Yes, yes.
Now, driveway's gonna have to be installed to that new residence, meeting the building code requirements.
To get a C O.
Yeah, to get a C O.
Or an, or an agreement to use the existing driveway as a two, two family, two, two property.
Furthermore, I would, I would suspect they would, might want that to be installed for purposes of construction access anyway.
Yeah, right.
Why bring the construction vehicles through the, through the primary?
Well, we got that cleared up.
So, from a planning board's perspective, you're okay because it shows on the plan?
Yeah, exactly.
And from their perspective, putting it in, if they want to move into the new house, is probably a good idea too, unless you go through the process of making it a two parcel common driveway, which you probably don't want to do.
Yeah, yeah, that an easement, I mean, that's great. All that.
Well, we certainly caught that nicely. Any other questions? Okay, I have a, I have a procedural resolution.
The only change in the procedural resolution is that...
The date?
Yeah, the, instead of dated December 19, 2000, it should simply read revised to January 22, 2018. And then the hearing, 6:50.
All righty, well, here we go. We're accepting the application, supporting documents, including a site plan drawing, revised date January 22, 2018, as adequate for initiating review by the planning board, its advisors, and the public. Two, we're classifying proposed actions as a type-two action under seeker for which further environmental quality review is precluded. We'll be scheduling a public hearing on the application for March 5, 2018, at 6:50, and direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth within the town code. We'll delegate, planning board members?
I'll do it.
Edna and I will do it? Okay. Get out and get some fresh air. Okay. And we will report back to the public hearing on our observations. In accordance with town code chapter 9, the Conservation Advisory Board, we're referring the application to the town C A B for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. And six, we're going to authorize the town planning consultant without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise on the basis of both the above cited field visit and referral to prepare working draft of an approval resolution for the planning board's consideration on March 5, 2018, or as may be later timely. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We will be getting in touch with you about the site visit and getting the C A B also up to speed on that, so we'll get that done. Okay.
Completely off?
Well?
No, sketch plan.
We'll ask.
Everything else on the agenda is sketch plan conference.
Yeah, okay. All righty, our next one is Chris and Katie Wile, 279 Wertenberg Road, sketch plan conference, special use permit and site plan approval. Review with the planning board under town code chapter 125 zoning, section 125 20A and 125 68E and 125 dash 74B through D, a proposed conversion of existing barn to a new principal single-family dwelling and the conversion of the existing principal dwelling to a detached accessory structure for use as a guest house on a 12.534-acre parcel within the rural countryside R C 5 zoning district and Dutchess County Ag District 20. Mark?
Hi, good evening, Mark Vermitzke, representing Chris and Katie Wile. So, this application is actually two-fold, one to the planning board and also to the zoning board. You know, this application has already been made to Z B A with, and met with them last month. I'll get into that as I go through the site plan. Property is located, well, it's located on Wertenberg Road, there's parcels that are associated with this tax, this tax parcel number, on both the east and west side of Wertenberg Road. The, this product however, is limited, a parcel on the west side is taken. The parcel on the east side has the existing residence and the existing barn located, and they're, they're shown on the site plan. And I believe this, did this application make it to the planning board? I, I'm new to the project, but was it...
It never did. It went through a bunch of gestations at the, like, pre-app meeting, things like that, but no, it never, never went to the planning board.
So, the existing residence is located close to the road, and then there's a barn further to the east, sits back on the property. So, the basis of this application is to convert the barn into the new residence and then have the existing residence be an accessory, essentially a guest house, but it's a, you know, defined as an accessory structure of the dwelling. And in doing that, and so there's, you know, the existing, the existing structure, there is, there's a 3,520 square feet of habitable space, and then on the barn, it exists at about 3,800, more than 3,800 square feet, and they're proposing to increase it to 4700 square feet. So, as, as I said before, this application has already been submitted to the zoning board appeals, and three area variances are required for this particular application. Number one, if, the, because the accessory structure is, as, the new accessory structure is the principal residence, it's 3,500 square feet and change, it's greater than the allowable 1,500 square feet, or excuse me, 900 square feet, that is allowable for the accessory dwelling. And then, this structure is also in the front yard of this property, so an area variance is required for the accessory structure to be in front of the principal dwelling. And then finally, an area variance is required for aggregate area of accessory structures because you have 3,500 for the, the new, you know, the accessory structure, and then there's also a pool house associated with it, and that, I think it's 800, it's around 800 square feet, and so those, those in aggregate are greater than 1,500 square feet. So, those are the area variances required by the zoning board appeals. To this board, it's application for site plan and special permit for an accessory dwelling on a particular piece of property. Access is off of the east side of Wertenberg Road, with regard to existing water supply and sewage disposal and proposed water supply and sewage disposal, that's actually being handled by Tim Ross, and I expect to have that, and he has met with the Dutchess County Health Department, they've done some on-site testing, and I expect to have that information within a day or two, because I'm required to make a submission back to the Z B A by Wednesday of this week, and I will also provide all that information to the town planning board. So, that'll handle the water and, the proposed and existing water and sewer facilities for the property. Access will still remain the same, driveway is located just a little bit to the north of the existing residence, and it serves both the residence and the barn. The remaining property has intended to remain vacant on the west side, and then also, a bit to the north of both of those structures, there's a, also associated with this property, I had discussions with Michael about it, there's an agricultural use, they have a cut flower business, but it is a wholesale cut flower business, no employees, and it's, those flowers are supplied by either subscription or they're taken off-site to, you know, to location. That's it.
Mark, one question. The application to the Z B A, has it been before the Z B A but not accepted yet by the Z B A?
That's correct.
Okay. I was just curious, because there has been no referral yet to the planning board, which would not occur until after acceptance.
That's correct. So, that, after the initial meeting, the zoning board requested some additional information. There was, I think they wanted to see the information relative to the sanitary facilities and also the architectural detail with regard to, you know, renovation or enlargement, renovation and enlargement of the barn, and so all those materials will be submitted to this board.
Okay, so presumably the Z B A could be accepting the application on February 21st, in which case the planning board could consider a referral on March 5.
That's correct.
Other questions for Mark on this?
Why, why change primary and secondary? Do we have an additional rule about secondary being, accessory structure being larger than the primary?
No, the primary structure is supposed to be the principal structure, and the accessory structure then under the zoning law, it can be a portion, a percentage, but it cannot be greater than...
Cannot exceed, but I mean, in this case, why not just apply for a variance on the size of the accessory structure and leave the primary structure in front of the property?
They want to move to the, they want to move to this location.
Can't you live in your accessory structure on your own property?
Well, you can, but they don't wish to.
They were choosing not to.
They're choosing to make the other one...
They're choosing to call it the primary.
Exactly.
Right, they're choosing to do that.
I was just trying to figure out what the point of it was. I don't see the point of it, but...
It's a variance one, one way or the other.
It slipped from the original application, my understanding.
Yes.
It was the other way around.
It was the other way around.
Yeah, when the...
They chose to move forward with this application.
And did you say that the pool also comes under another easement?
Well, the pool house.
Because it's over 900?
It's, it's roof structure, so then it needs to be included as part of the floor area for the aggregate for accessory structure.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a pretty, pretty complete application. I think we've pretty well gone over all the different details. I just, for everyone to understand, a floral company business in New York State, that's only cut flowers, it does not require any permitting from Ag and Markets, anything like that. This is in Ag District 20, so it's certainly permitted use as we permit agriculture throughout the town, with, I guess the exception is Rhine Cliff, I guess. And so that actually has no bearing whatsoever on this application.
One... One, the questions that I asked Mark about the Z B A relate to the conversation we had this afternoon. I commented this afternoon that I thought the planning board would be in the position of being able to process this application at its February 20th meeting. Standard operating procedure with the planning board is that no application is processed until the Z B A has accepted a related application. And the Z B A will not be accepting the application until presumably at the earliest the 21st.
That's correct.
So therefore processing would be on May, on March 5th and not February 20th?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess the next step of course is just to get the applications all together and get them in the RISA.
I will revise the Z B A application and any of those materials, I'll move under separate cover to the planning board.
And then we'll move on from there.
Great.
Mark, thank you.
What is, what is the total acreage?
Excuse me?
The total acreage?
What is the total acreage?
It is 12.534 acres.
Right, 12 and a half acres.
Okay. Moving right along. I believe we are up next. Dell's Dairy Cream LLC, Sketch Plan Conference, Review of the Planning, with the Planning Board under Town Code Chapter 125 Zoning, a proposed demolition of existing nonhistoric residential building, construction of an open pavilion, and undertaking of related access parking, fencing, and landscaping improvements on a 1.18 acre parcel within the community business south and land conservation street corridor of zoning district. It's the Dell's, the existing Dell's Dairy Cream site.
Yes, Dell's Dairy Cream, so ultimately the owner would like to demolish the existing residence that's on the property, the existing, we'll just go to Plan C101, is the existing condition survey, which shows the septic area, the gravel parking in the rear, the paved parking in the front, the existing ice cream shop, as well as the residence that's on the property and the associated tankage, little shed, the above ground propane tank, the sign, the planter that's out in front that has the sign, pretty straightforward with the trees. Then C102 is the proposed site plan, which was developed after the pre-application meeting. We talked about some egress issues, the fact that it was paved all the way across the front and just the sheer number of parking spaces for the town going, so bringing it up to snuff with media parking designation, the number of spaces, and ultimately it fits more in key things like what the owner would like to establish, is more kind of an area of refuse, if you will, where you can wait for your ice cream and put your order in up front of the building and then have parking off to the side. Part of the pre-application meeting also was consideration of green space in the parking area, which we addressed, landscaping around to kind of shield some of the parking lots that have seemed too aggressive. And the other part of the site plan, the only proposed actual new structure, the shed that is behind the existing cream, ice cream shop will be relocated to the back of the property and they're proposing to build a 20 by 30 pavilion, basically, for pick and take, so you can sit out back. So the egress, essentially the, the change, instead of having curb cut all the way across the road frontage, the intent is to establish curb line, so basically like a DOT island all the way across the road frontage with just a single point of egress and a one-way traffic pattern would come in, be able to park, and it's essentially a one-way traffic with a turning arrow and angled parking and then they would come in, park, and then park. Part of the pre-application meeting, we discussed the implications of DOT around the time. I have spoken with two, both permit engineer and the field engineer essentially at DOT for Dutchess County. They both have the mindset that given that we're not performing work within the right-of-way or 52 of New York State DOT law, you only need to have a permit if you're conducting work actually within the right-of-way. The property line is the end of the right-of-way and everything is going to be on the property line, so that's essentially their position. I've ordered the site plan and to come back to me and Chuck and they're both going to take a look and converse and then they'll get us a letter basically stating.
They have no problem about narrowing the egress and that?
No, they prefer it, because right now it's an uncontrolled entrance, you can pull it in anywhere across the road frontage, they want a one in, one out.
You could pull it in about 50 miles an hour.
Yeah, it's hard to. So then C103 is the lighting and landscape plan, essentially a little sign right here just kind of reiterating the fact that parking is to be taken to the right. Parking, lighting, lamp posts with a 12-foot height are indicated on the plan for safety lighting in the parking area. There will be two islands of green space within the parking area all along the road frontage that will be established as, you know, plantings as well, but the, we show tree plantings and it's to be determined as far as species, but he's somewhat partial to the evergreens, so additional screening during the winter months. So that's essentially the lighting and landscape plan. All exterior lighting on the building, the existing structural remains and the sign, none of that will be changed.
There'll be no change to the classic existing architecture?
No, yeah, they, they declined. No, no proposed renovation facility at all.
I believe they'll be preserving the neon. Pardon? I believe they'll be preserving the neon.
Yeah.
C104 is our erosion sediment control plan, we're just over a half an acre disturbance, but still seeing multi notes, erosion, sil fence notes, sil fence around the perimeter essentially. The other portion of the project will be a fence line they'd like to establish on the north side of the property and, you know, on the plan, that's about, you know, four-foot height so far back from the edge of the property line for site distance.
I think along the side, it's six feet is allowed. It's four feet along the front and I believe it's six feet along the side.
Four, four feet within the front yard and then six feet.
Right, yeah.
And then details, so just a stockade fence essentially, the media parking requirements, erosion sediment control, there are a number of catch basins along the road frontage that won't be impacted by the curb work and there's erosion control, protection of existing catch basins, sil fence, parking surface.
Andy, existing septic, proposed new well?
There's a, there's a proposed new well that has been approved by the Department of Health. Basically, they, they are subject to public water supply, however, you can't basically permit it and design it until you have the well yield, so we got approval from Dave Pearson on the location, which is basically in the front. So there's an existing outdoor seating area that has a stockade fence in front of it right now to the north side of the parcel, so the well will be right there because that's no longer parking, it doesn't have to be bothered or anything like that, so. They, once they fill the well, we'll get the yield and then we'll have to submit to the Department of the Tree Planting. The existing S D S, no increase in loading, it's the same use. As a matter of fact, the residence shares that field, so theoretically it can go down, but Dave basically mentioned that there's no, no requirement for it.
What was the change directly in front of the building where the parking was? You originally talked about painting that, I can't see from here.
Yeah, there's, he's thinking about painting it just to kind of establish, you know, an area of.
We kind of talked about making that grassy?
Yeah, and his preference is to not have it grassy so that as you're standing out, if you've got a long line, if it's in the springtime, he doesn't want to have to worry about people standing in wet muddy grass and, but basically establishing the green space in the very front with plantings kind of softens the feel of the parking of the asphalt in front.
It's still asphalt, painted green.
Color T V D.
Well, I just think you have an opportunity to green it up some more.
Aren't there plantings in the?
There are. Plantings are proposed all the way along the road frontage.
Compared to what's there now? I was like.
I just, you know.
It's a massive improvement.
Yeah, it is, but I just, it's just in personal opinion and I think rather than have asphalt that you paint green, it would be nicer to see green space.
Yeah, and the, the green space is really going to be primarily in the rear but for, you know, use, but it's more of a function of the patron, you know, not standing in wet grass.
And the sign is, the sign's being retained.
Sign's being retained, yeah.
So the, the new green space will be where the residence is now?
No, that's the parking.
Our residence is here, yeah, actually there's a dotted outline on the proposed plan that shows where the residence is, but that'll be the parking area.
So it's because what, baseball teams and soccer teams in the back of the facility?
Whatever, yeah, families, you know, you're, so that they've got some place to basically hang out, you know. I mean, he's got the existing deck to the north side here, but he kind of wants it to make it more of a park-like feel right there. And we did submit some architectural renderings of that wing. Ultimately, they changed their mind a little bit, I think, from, from that, just on a cost and constructability standpoint, so basically, I think, six columns and just a shed to kind of stand.
Will that deck be open to the back?
This deck here?
Close away.
This deck here? That's a good question. Right now, there's an existing fence that goes back there, I think just because it's not all that attractive. Back there, the L P tank is above ground, so the L P will get buried. He may open that up. There'll be this fence line along here and fence line along the front will retain, so.
Other questions?
I would just like to say that for such a complicated application, I would prefer to see the plans before the pre-application meeting. I can't see a thing. I think the point is to, for people to raise issues now.
Right.
So, I mean, if it's just as easy to get the plans before, that would be helpful.
Yeah, well, yes. And the idea here is for you to see the plans at this, at this meeting, that's the function.
I know, I can't see them. We got one set and I can't see them.
Other side of that is the cost.
Yeah.
Most of us are lying, that's why I said.
Well, then this is not, they're a useful meeting.
That's a bad situation. What do we do about that?
Well, the problem, the problem is for this meeting, as sketch plan, basically all that's really required is a sketch of what they propose to do, basically a very general, very rough depiction of what they want to do. And then they're supposed to go from this meeting, having met with us in our discussion, and then put together pretty much what he has right here as the application, which would then go to the zoning administrator to review to see whether or not it meets, you know, the basic zoning requirements. And then that application in many different copies, I don't know how many copies were required, 11 or whatever, would then be submitted to the planning board for us to look at and see whether or not this is what we're looking for, what changes we want, things of that sort. So basically, this is a bit of a hybrid. This is far more detailed than what a sketch plan meeting actually requires.
Well, it's more detailed, but it's so far away that we can't see it, so.
Well, it's a complicated application.
The whole purpose of doing this is supposed to be to prevent every applicant in front of us from copying eight, nine, 10 copies.
Exactly.
Just to look at us and say, this is ridiculous and shred it all up and have to.
That's my next question. I think we submit 12 copies, so for sketch, sketch plan review in the future, we can just submit one and.
Generally, what you have is sort of what you almost had at a pre-application meeting. A little more detailed, but not more than that, because at that point you really haven't gotten all the guidance that the planning board's likely to give you for exactly where what goes and whatnot. This really is more akin to what you'd actually be submitting as your actual application for the Z B A to go over, and then 11 copies for us all to look at through a process of acceptance of the actual application.
Yep.
What's the profit?
It's just vacant.
And the next one up is the Costco, Costco place?
That I don't know. There's that billboard that is right there.
Right, right, and that's sort of wetting it into here or some.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit wetter, I think, as you go up the back of the shop to the east. So that's the existing residence that you see, the dotted line, so that'll go over and this is just paved all the way across the front, so they'll establish the island.
Which is nice.
I think there's a, there are probably two fundamental concepts involved there for the board to comment on, and I think, I know the answer for one, obviously the board, I believe deals it's a great idea to begin to control the uncontrolled access across the front of that property. I think the second, the second item for maybe some planning board input is the issue that was raised by Melody about the treatment of the, the area in front of the building that is being decommissioned as parking space, but yet not really being converted to a, an attractive pedestrian space with the, with the asphalt still in place.
Perhaps what could happen is the planting area in front, I mean, I can understand you want hard surface up by the order windows, things like that.
Expand it.
But perhaps the area of planting from the right-of-way back would be expanded, you know, sort of realistically, how much space do you need for people ordering and picking up, because you assume that they're going to go sit down somewhere, go in the back, whatever. What do you really need in the front for, you know, order and pickup and what could you then actually dedicate, because quite frankly, with the plants that close to the road in a year like this, with the salt they use and things like that, those plants don't have a, have a snowflake and probably surviving.
Yeah, it's, it's surprising, it's about 23 feet from the, from the flood line where that curb line begins.
Yeah.
So it's, it is a good clip, more further than a normal island you would see.
Yeah.
Or a path, a simply, you know, a path for the patrons to stand on while they're waiting in line.
That island could be expanded in west, in the rest of west.
Well, you used to be able to have things like grass created, you know, semi-permeable block.
Yeah. You mean basically tear up the asphalt.
Yeah, or some of these semi-permeable blocks that provide some substance and substrate without looking just like blacktop.
Or greentop is the case?
Greentop, a tennis court.
It would, it would make the front a lot more attractive, certainly.
Yeah, and the applicant's position is that the plantings really is kind of the screening factor and that, you know, ultimately, if he, you know, paints it attractively, then that will kind of alleviate the fact that, you know, it's not just asphalt all the way to the building.
I just don't think you can paint asphalt attractively.
Added expense, well, you haven't seen my asphalt, so. The, you know, the added expense, because he's going to a significant expense just to establish the.
Well, I appreciate the green space in the back, but that's not what I'm going to see from the road.
I think Harts, Harts made an interesting suggestion, if you could incorporate, first of all, broaden the front planting area, but also possibly incorporate a split rail fence in there.
We do, actually.
There is a.
There is?
Yeah.
I knew it was a good idea.
There's no more parking in the front, will there be tables out there?
Uh, no, no.
That's a lot, that's a lot of place for people to queue up for, for ice cream, is that really required?
Well, that, the kids who are waiting for ice cream, kicking balls around and stuff.
So this is at 40 feet here, it's like 40 by 40, right, I'm just looking at this 20 feet here. What's going about that?
Yeah. Maybe 35.
And Ed, the layout is going to be the same, it's all right up in front is where you get your ice cream, so then that's going all the way back here too?
Yep, that basically, this will be, you can still go into the building and they'll still have the interior seating the way that it is now.
Right.
And you can still access the deck, but then also you'll be able to come back through these pavers into the back kind of courtyard area if you like that.
Unlike your typical business in Reinbeck, this one goes from one person to 50 people within a matter of 15 minutes.
Yeah.
And I can definitely see, you go up to Red Hook and you look at Holy Cow.
Yep.
It's all pavement there, but if you, if you watch, it's the kids who go off to the grass, to the south end of that plaza, and all the adults sit right in the front because it is easy. As unattractive as that is, they need some screening on the front there, but I think the screening will be very nice.
It'll definitely be a gossip improvement of what's, what's not there now.
Right.
Okay. Any more questions?
This should be an agenda item for the next meeting for acceptance and processing of application.
Just, just out of curiosity, the pavilion is way far back, is there, is there a reason to put it so far back?
Basically where we identified, there's a big 30. Basically, where we identified, there's a big 36-inch maple here that has about a 30-foot canopy, so let's begin it out away from that. And kind of just how it sits in the courtyard there, we're standing around and figured that's what it was, so.
Okay.
Felt the right spot.
So I understand they're milking the cows for the ice cream to come?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Creamery is being built, and they're going to be processing milk.
All right.
Same time.
Thank you. Okay. Is someone here for Kathy Shepherd? Very good. Well, 22 Kelly Street Sketch Plan Conference. This is a proposed addition to an historic contributing single-family dwelling on a .310 acre parcel within the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Overlay District, and the National Historic Landmark District, Towns LWRA. And if timely-
Nope.
Excuse me?
No, no site plan.
And no site plan application?
That's right, sir.
It is, it is a site plan. This is sketch plan for a site plan. Thank you.
No, thank you, because this would be the first time we're actually close to on time. I appreciate that. My name's David Freeman. I'm here tonight for the Shepherds, for their house on Kelly Street. The existing house, the front portion of the house is actually a landmark house. So it's a variety additions to the existing home. The portion of the landmark house that we're touching is the removal of the existing front porch, and then the reconstruction of it. On the side adjacent to that is the construction of an entry mudroom. On the first floor in the back is the construction of a covered porch on the north side, and a covered porch on the south side. And then on the second floor in the back is the construction of a master bedroom. It's an older home. It's a landmark home. Basement, and then the rest is just slab on grade. The additions themselves, so from the front, it's the reconstruction of the front porch, same style, same materials. The addition of that small mudroom on the side to carry the roof around. The addition on the north side of a covered porch. The addition on the south side of a covered porch. And then right now, to the rear of the building, this is a one-story family room. The construction of a master bedroom on top of that. That's all the simple part. There is no driveway. I don't know how many familiar with this site. There has not been a driveway. There has not been parking on the site. So the owners, who's ever lived in this class previous to them, parks on the road. So the second part of this is the construction of a detached garage up on the top where the house is, rather than down on the area where Kelly Street is. So 24 by 26 foot garage, storage above. And then when you do get to a site visit, that brings in the issue of a driveway. So we're rising up approximately 15 feet. Calculated out, it does meet town code, the driveway. First 20 feet is flat, as required by town code, and then goes up to a short section of 6% and then up to the maximum before getting to the flat area at the top in front of the garage.
Do you have to get a running start to get that done?
No, it's plowed. I mean, here, the town code requires that it be paved or be a solid service material, so it should be easier to clean up.
What's the max?
15. So I have to do my calculations a little closer. Right now, I'm at 16, so.
And the garage doors face the house?
The garage doors face the house. It's what's called a three maneuver turnaround or three maneuver pulling, where you're actually, instead of doing one, two, you have to do one, two.
It's the okay turn.
Right. So it's a little tough. It's tight. But I'm holding the garage back five feet from the property line, so we don't get into a fire code issue. Beyond that, I think that's the project.
Questions? I know we reviewed this with you. It, I think we were all pretty, pretty satisfied with what you were putting together. It does not seem to detract in any way, shape, or form from the house itself. Does add space that obviously you could use. I hope you have small cars, because that's going to be a tricky turn.
Yep.
But a 67 Austin Cooper S would be nice. They're 10 feet long, five feet wide. Perfect.
And you stop at a half one, you can-
Sorry? I just hit it to half one.
If you go out for a site visit, you'll actually see that the house is up on, you know, 16 feet above the road. And so the elevation, the garage is up at the house level.
It's, for Rhine Cliff especially, given the constraints and all, it's really a very, very good design.
Good use of space.
It really is to try and accomplish this. I think it's very well done.
If you have to put a concrete rail, we're going to get there.
Other questions?
You will see the garage from the road?
Yes. So the elevation of the garage is typical side elevation of a garage. Similar material to the house, the good portion of the house, not the asbestos shingue portion of the house, so.
Is that going to be changed?
Yeah. And you'll have that with the process.
Under rush?
Yeah. It's tight. We need night footers.
Just because of the-
And it is, there is, it's, it's an older home. The two-thirds of the home is slab on grade, so there is no storage in the home. The second floor of the garage gives the owner storage.
Art's just looking to see whether or not, in the Rhine Cliff Overlay or Hamlet-
Yeah, it would be the Hamlet.
-there are any building coverage, you know, percent covered by building, percent open space. I don't?
There are. Well, I believe it's, it's on the application, which you can see, so you have, you have that.
There's a limit to saturation, you're saying?
No, to, to coverage. Impervious coverage. I mean, it's just like, there's so much percent open space, so much percent empty building, so much percent impervious surface. In most of the districts, I think in Rhine Cliff, things are a little more liberal, because they have to be.
Because they're pretty open.
For example, there are no setbacks in Rhine.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Why is the garage turned?
See, literally, there's no other way to get into it. So it's, if you were to pull straight up the driveway and try and pull into it, you'd be literally having to drive to the garage. We need that flat area in front of the garage. Unfortunately, it's tight. I mean, it's between the garage and the house. But that's really the only way to make a safe entrance into the garage.
Otherwise, you'd be slipping out and just shooting straight down with a 15-degree-
Right.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
You said you were at 16 degrees now, and you're, how are you going to make up to?
So I have to, we're at a 16% grade. I have to make up 1%. What I have done, so when you come in, town law requires you come in at a flat, and then I had ramped up slowly to get to that. I just need to ramp up a little faster and then bring that down a little bit, so.
David, I think we discussed site plan, an application for site plan being required. I'm not sure if we identified an application for special use permit as also a requirement.
Okay.
And it is. Specifically, because this is an expansion of an existing dwelling unit for construction of a new dwelling unit, it also requires special use permit under that section.
So.
Yeah, so you, so you need both applications.
Is that in Hamlet Overlay?
It's in the RC Overlay.
Okay, definitely.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess you're all set to put the application together. And, you know, if you have any other questions, the Risa about what you would need can certainly answer those. But as Art just said, you just have to append a special use permit application to the site plan review application that you have. They both run together, you know, the review, the whole nine yards, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Our next sketch plan is A Solomon Associates LLC. This is a Sketch Plan Conference Special Use Permit, Wetlands Permit, Site Plan Approval for a Proposed Underground Installation of 3,900-